Good evening, everyone. Welcome. This is the August 22nd, 2022 Special Counsel Meeting. And we're now calling to order. Let's do the place of the speeches, please.
Please clarify, in the United States of America, into a republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Anybody who should please call the floor.
Counsel member Frank Banker.
Present.
Counsel member Leslie Notaro.
Here.
Counsel member Lloyd Roberts.
Here.
Counsel member Jody Shirley.
Here.
Counsel member Mike Zabel.
Here.
Vice Mayor Glenn Gun.
Here.
Mayor Dave Gaddis.
Here.
Interim city manager Kyle Riefler.
Here.
And city attorney Randy Mora.
Present.
Thank you, Patty. Before we get started, I want to take just a second to wish City Attorney Mora a happy birthday.
Do you have a cake?
Should we say?
She has all the gifts I need.
All right, we only have one item on this particular agenda, and that is to discuss the city manager contract. So, that being said, I'm assuming everyone has read the changes and has something to say about it. So, let's go ahead and start with Mike.
Well, actually, I'm good with all the changes recommended, except for the first one, the health and medical insurance about these requests. We consider contributing 72% for spousal coverage cost. Right now, you know, and I'm going to say it, we really did push the budget to get the base included and just leave. We're at the point right now, I don't think we really have a leeway or the money to contribute toward that. So, right now, we're going to no on that section, but approve of the rest of it.
Thank you. Lloyd Roberts.
Thank you. I think with any negotiation, there's hopefully an ability to create a win-win scenario for both parties. Typically, that involves give and take from both parties. So, I think there's some options to potentially consider here. I understand why Mr. Griffin is concerned about health concerns for his wife, his spouse. Makes sense, being that there was probably some type of coverage potentially with his current job. So, I think there's a couple of variables out there that we can ask him to consider. Because I agree with Mike, coming forward with this amount of money, based on the discussions we've had about trying to make this all fit, is challenging at best. So, I think there's some scenarios where Medicare is a tremendous option. I could tell you from personal experience, I don't know how many people here are elderly enough to participate in that. I am, and my wife is. I spent a lot of time investigating Medicare, what the costs are and the benefits are. So, without getting into all the detail, I currently have a Medicare A and D and a supplemental account, supplemental with United Healthcare, which basically allows me to go anywhere in the United States, go see any surgeon, and I come out of pocket zero. And I pay approximately $150 a month for that service. To me, that seems very, very hard to me. Now, I don't know, Mr. Griffin, he could be 45 years old. I don't know. But he and his wife may in fact qualify for that. So, I think that's an option potentially for them to take a look at, which I think at the end of the day would save money for the city. And that's really what we're after, to try to get a scenario that's going to make the potential city manager happy as well as the city. So, I think that's definitely a thing for him to consider. I think there's also, you know, I've looked at, you know, the $300 we're giving the potential city manager, that amount of money for his automobile allowance. So, that's $3,600 a year. Here's the way I think about it in my head. If I was the city manager in Fort Lauderdale, we're never paying anybody for them to drive from home to work. That's not part of the equation. We all drive from home to work in any jobs we've ever had. Once he's here, he may have scenarios where it may require him to drive somewhere in the city. We're not Fort Lauderdale. It doesn't take an hour and 45 minutes to get from the south part of Fort Lauderdale to the north part, which would require him to put a lot of wear and tear potentially on his vehicle and expenses for gas. We're a very small town, probably 15, 20 minutes either way from here to get to a residence to talk to somebody that may have an issue. So, my take is that the $300 a month may be an option to negotiate with Mr. Griffin to see if that's something he may be willing to give up to try to move closer to an agreement with the money. My understanding is, as an example, I talked with Mr. Mora that if and when he was to travel, let's say, to Jacksonville to go to some type of a meeting there where he gets per diem, you know, he gets paid mileage for that. So, the $300 is basically just for this area here in the city, which I think is something he may be willing to give up if it helps us get closer to a number that's going to work for all of us.
Good points. Thank you very much.
Frank Banker. Maybe our counsel can clarify this. When I was working dealing with health and welfare, I was told that Obamacare, that if you're a full-time employee, you cannot go on Medicare. Because there was a lot of employees I wanted to put on Medicare that were over 65, some weren't. My boss just died at 90, and they said Obamacare, there was provision that you could not do that.
I'm not familiar with the intricate parts of the American Healthcare Act. I can tell you that Mr. Griffin would be covered regardless. His wife is not a full-time employee here or elsewhere. So, that's not necessarily all into this inquiry here. But I can't pretend to tell you on my, on the occasion of my 37th birthday, how Medicare and Medicaid work, or more particularly, the American Healthcare Act.
All right. I was just under that assumption that you couldn't do that.
That maybe you can.
I don't have a problem picking up his wife's benefits as long as we pick up every employee that works for this city's benefits. I don't think an employee should be taxed to have benefits. Put it in your job review. Put it in Lynn's job review. I think we owe the employees everything we can give them. They're great employees here and so fortunate to have them. But if we don't do it for all, I don't want to do it for one. That's all I can say.
Thank you. Leslie Notaro.
I agree with what Mr. Banker just said about the spousal insurance. We either do it for everybody, or we don't. But that is a serious knock on our budget. I also agree with the thing about the monthly vehicle allowance for business-related travel. If you have to travel to Tallahassee for something, you get excents per mile on the trip up there, but you don't just get money to come to, from your house to work.
And to clarify as far as how the agreement presently operates, within the clause on professional development, the final sentence provides reimbursement for reasonable costs associated with travel for professional development within your discretion. So, that is there. The $300 is not just necessarily travel for professional development that could be considered. While the town itself, the city itself, is a smaller jurisdiction, managers often go to countywide meetings, the Big C meetings, all of these sorts of things. And Melles County can be larger even if you're not traveling and all that. So, it was intended to capture both those things. Ultimately, that's your policy decision. I just want to make sure you understood how the document is structured.
The way I'm reading this, it's 300 bucks a month whether you travel to anywhere in Melles County or wherever. It's just a blanket $300 a month. Is that correct?
Correct. It provides for $300 a month. The actual language is agrees that Melles City shall not provide an automobile. City agrees that it shall compensate manager with a monthly vehicle allowance of $300 for business-related travel without limitation.
Up to 300.
Up to 300.
Well, I mean, is that what we're saying? Do you have to put in an expense report to get up to $300? Or you just get $300 on your check for here's your, here's the line that says car?
It is a vehicle allowance of 300. It does not, it's not structured as reimbursement-based. The phone one is, specifically says. One of them specifically says, oh, on phone, it says upon presentation of value documentation of such expenses. That does not appear in the automobile. It does provide, however, that the manager shall be responsible for the payment of insurance, fuel, maintenance, and other costs from using his personal vehicle. The city's not assuming those costs. And it is a $300 allowance, correct?
Excellent. Jody Shirley.
Yeah, the only thing I had issues with too is the very first part, the health and medical insurance. It's not something we discussed at all for compensation for his spouse. And I'm not in support of starting that. We've been kind of hard-nosed on the employment manual and following some procedures that are in there. And this is in this area. This one area, we're not, you know, to deviate from it doesn't make sense. So, I would not be in support of it. That's the only comment I have.
Thank you. Glenn Gun.
I think after the last meeting, the consensus was, there's some stuff in there. I think he was personally overly generous with respect to the spousal.
Okay, I'm in agreement with everyone here about the spousal coverage. You have to do it for everyone, like Mora. No. It's already hard enough to justify what we're trying to work out with this guy. I think he can do great things for this city. But if the $16,000 is a deal killer, so be it. Can we just raise the bar and start the process over?
And for the sake of clarity, $16,000 represents the full cost to seeking 72% of that $16,000 as the contribution. And for the benefit of the council, Mr. Griffin is present and available to see if you do have directed questions for him. But the sum is 72% of that $16,000.
Like about 11.
Right, roughly 11. Don't quote the lawyer on the way out. I'm just giving you the truth.
Do we have the figures of what it would be without his wife?
For total compensation or?
For medical.
His insurance is the same amount, the $16,042, I believe it was. Sorry, $16,092. That's the cost of his. His wife is at the same exact cost. So, yes, we have it, and that is a cost we are paying for him regardless.
Right.
It's just his wife.
So, on top of the salary and all the other benefits, this would be an additional $11,500, just for clarification. All right, let's go back around this way. Glenn Gun.
You use the term total compensation. So, you must have the number. What is the one that Mora told?
I don't have the number precisely. I can, I was using that terms in part based on your last discourse as you folks talked about the salary, the retirement contribution, the phone budget, the car budget. Somebody at the table done that. I'm not going to quote the exact number off the top of my head, but with all of that, it was my understanding we were somewhere between 180 and 190. Around 180, I believe, was the figure for his compensation before we talk about the addition of his wife. If it wasn't 180, it would have been, you know, $2,000 for that.
So, we're about to make decisions, and we don't even know what the exact number is?
I don't believe that's entirely accurate. Your attorney has not done the mathematical calculation. I believe, I did speak with staff, Kyle and Patty on this, and they did add an approximation of that figure. I just don't have that figure in front of me. I wouldn't say that's.
It's about 185.
Thank you. Any other questions? Jody Shirley.
I'm just not in favor of providing any additional compensation compensation.
Leslie?
Nothing further.
Frank?
I think the last meeting, and I remember fully your mathematical equations, which we found, but I think he came up with a figure around $39,000 of that, which would bring us up to about 185 or whatever it had to. So, we're far exceeding. And I'm not, I'm a positive, because I want to do it all. But I think we're just far exceeding what we were looking at.
Lloyd?
So, just to clarify, so every employee a medical plan is basically $16,092, you'd say?
No, it's variable based on health. I mean, not health, sorry, age, age, gender. So, in brackets.
Okay.
And just at that age bracket, that's the number.
Okay.
If this employee was 33, that number would likely be.
Okay. So, the sum could be more than that, so it could be less than that.
That's my understanding.
Okay. All right, that's fair. So, again, so the .72%, I mean, the 72% of that was $11,500. And if Mr. Griffin agreed to the $300 a month going away, so that's $3,600, just to put some numbers in there. So, now we're down to $8,000. Just $8,000 additional for his spouse. The city would be paying that. So, just want to clarify that.
Thank you. Mike?
No, definitely agree with the council members, specifically about, you know, his budget package. I understand that we'd rather that not to cover the spousal coverage because it's all or nothing. You cover all the employees the same, or you?
Thank you. Spousal coverage is an option if you pay 100% out of pocket. Is that correct? All right, I don't really have any other questions at this time. Where do we go from here? Just need to decide, we're sticking with this and striking the spousal coverage, or are we look elsewhere?
I'd like to recommend we give the candidate an opportunity to speak.
Mr. Griffin, would you like to come speak?
Thank you.
And thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you very much. And thank you for all the hard work you've done over all these months. It's really a pleasure to be here. I thought long and hard about this issue before I raised it. And my initial request to Randy was that the out-of-pocket costs that I have now with my insurance, my spouse's, my wife's insurance, would be comparable to what I have right now with my engineering firm. And I ask for that, you know, out of my well-being, my wife's well-being, and my well-being. This is also my well-being. The, right now, I pay $42,000 a year, $350 a month for my coverage and my wife's coverage. And that was my request to Randy, that you consider that. Counselor Roberts, this is an excellent idea, which is that perhaps there's room with giving the automobile allowance. Perhaps that's not as critical as it might be in other circumstances. And I indicated that I'd be willing to, I'd be willing to forego that. That would produce a figure of just about $8,000. And so, my request to you would be compromise to you is that the spousal coverage would be paid 50/50. City would pay 50, and I would pay 50% of it.
Frank Banker. Mr. Griffin?
Yes, sir.
Are you saying you don't need a car coverage then?
What I'm saying is, I think Counselor Roberts argued that there should not be great in-city local mileage car expenses, is I think is a valid point. And to bring us closer together, I'd be willing to forego that and apply those dollars instead to the spousal coverage.
So, I guess my big question is, to save the city $3,000, are you willing to forego the car allowance? Yeah, if you don't need it, I don't think we should be paying it, is what I'm saying.
Well, that's what I was saying.
Yeah, well, I would like to just take it off the table, is what I'm saying. No, I just want to take it off. If you're not going to use it, or if it's not needed, why pay it?
As far as cities go, city manager compensation goes at very modest car allowance. I've had a car allowance that's doubled and almost tripled.
Yeah, I understand that. But what I'm understanding now is we're spending something that we're not really going to, we don't really need. So, you're saying that you don't need it?
What I was indicating was that the expense was, for this city, was not, that was not that great. And that perhaps in spirit compromise, I was suggesting a resolution that I thought was fair. Instead of asking for $16,000, I was asking that we split that cost.
I'm going to chime in one second. I'll go right to you. I don't look at it as, I don't need it. I look at it as I'm willing to give this part negotiated.
Lloyd Roberts?
Yes, sir. So, you would, I just want to clarify the number. So, you were saying the city would pay half, and you would pay half. Is that half of the 16?
Yes, sir. I presently pay $42,000 a year.
Right.
For my coverage and my wife's coverage. So, if you add the $3,600 a year, car allowance, that brings you close to $8,000, like $78,000. So, that's what I was suggesting.
And then, let me make sure I've got this correct. Out of that $8,000, we would pay half, and you would pay half? Is that?
The spousal coverage would be $16,000, and I would pay $8,000 of that, and the city would pay $8,000 as a suggested compromise.
And then on top of that, I'm sorry. Then on top of that, then the $3,600, if we remove the $300 for the car allowance, would effectively bring that eight down to a four number sort of bitch, that the city would actually? Am I seeing those numbers correctly? So, you would pay eight, let's just round it up. So, you would pay $8,000 and not get a car allowance? Is that what you were asking for, Mr. Griffin?
Yeah. Let me just clarify. Other than that would be, that would be, in effect, I'd be paying, in terms relative, the contract is now, I'd be paying $11,500. So, no, that would not be the case.
Well, just so I understand the number. So, if you were paying $8,000 for your spouse's insurance, then the insurance company would say, okay, the city of Brooksville, I'm sorry, the city of Heather Beach, boy, this is the word, the city of Heather Beach, you're paying $8,000 to make the insurance company happy.
That's right.
But we effectively would be reducing your compensation or our expense by taking away $3,600 from the automobile. So, instead of, instead of us really coming out of pocket for being $500, we're really coming out for $5,000, effectively?
What I was indicating was that I would allocate the car allowance to paying for health insurance. $42,000 I pay now, plus $3,600 I would add to that. So, in effect, I'd be seeing $8,000 less compensation. If we added the car allowance too, it would be $11,600. So, it'd be quite a drop back.
Frank?
I just have a question, how this medical insurance works. So, if we were to pay something towards the pay, is that a total cap? Or once you hit that cap, does the city still have liability positions for procedures or expenses over and above that?
That's all between myself and the insurance company.
Short answer, no. The way it would be structured, the way the contract would be written would be clear, that the city is not paying for any deductibles or continuing costs beyond the cost of the plan itself. So, if he goes to his doctor, and they say, well, there's a $42 charge today, that's out of pocket for him. We're just paying for the cost of plan is what we're speaking about at present.
I'm sorry, my position is to.
Jody Shirley.
Yeah, I'm looking at a rough number of compensation, I'm not going to infer that. I think we've compromised considerably, and it's a compromise on both sides. And I'm not seeing it on the other side. So, I'm playing, I just say no. We can't do it.
Leslie Notaro.
Agree with what Jody just said. A little hot.
Frank?
I think we need to revisit this car allowance. I mean, the former city manager had a truck. I saw him all over the city. I mean, I think Kyle can attest to that. He used his truck for many, many jobs in here. Removed the trash, removed just. So, we're not going, if he doesn't need the car allowance, I think we should save ourselves about $3,000, $3,600.
Just for purposes of trying to determine the consensus and sort of eating the elephant one bite at a time. On the health insurance portion, what is your position?
One, if we're going to do it for one, we do it for all. Thank you.
Lloyd Roberts?
And I believe the previous city manager did give a part of this, right?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to. Is there any chance that you were able to look into further depths of options for Medicare and supplements for your wife? And if that looked like a very good medical plan option for her, that if you found that, and by some chance we were able to approve something here, a smaller portion, that you would then move to that and remove in the entirety, anything that the city was paying towards your spouse?
I would move aggressively in that direction. Yes, I would.
Does your, I thought your wife is presently working?
She is, but part-time. She does not have medical coverage other than what I provide.
Again, that would touch on the Unaffordable Healthcare Act. The parameters of that.
Well, I think that, I mean, I don't follow any of that.
Because you're retired.
Well, she's part-time, so she doesn't really qualify for any type of medical aid.
Depends with her employer's plan. Summary plan description of her employer would define what it covers and what doesn't.
Yeah, I'm not 100% on that, but I don't think Medicare can tell you that if you're working part-time that you're obligated to use the other name.
I didn't think that either, and I was preschool. Because I wanted a lot of guys off.
Mike?
I agree with Counselor Shirley.
I'm in the same mindset. I still think that our city can swallow this. I know it doesn't seem like a whole lot of money in the grand scheme of things, just adding spouse. But there are other ways. And I know for a fact that our company just encouraged the more seasoned employees to reduce their costs by going to Medicare, or get Medicare. And it was a substantial cost savings. And they did exactly what you were talking about, where you subsidize it, and you come out with great insurance. In fact, as you know, Wendy's parents, they started Di-De. And her parents are on the same plan. They're using Medicaid or Medicare. I'm sure, because I don't follow it. But they switched, and they still go to Mayo Clinic. They do all these great things, and really, it's been a change in that approach. So, that's something to consider. But as far as just outright, let's just go ahead and vote on the plan. I think it's too much.
Mayor, if I may suggest, just from a procedural standpoint, it seems that the majority of the council is opposed to this element. As this is a negotiation, there may be some value given to the candidates here in asking. You may not even make a decision. You may not even make a decision. The candidate may be inclined to make a decision themselves. You may wish to ask them what their position is at this point, as the council has sort of indicated it's on that issue.
The advice. Mr. Griffin?
Yes, sir.
What are your thoughts on investigating the Medicare plan and considering going that route? I just don't think that as a municipality, we're willing to accept taking your wife onto our insurance.
Well, I would be willing to aggressively pursue that. But I would hate to be at the present point and drop my insurance that I have for my wife with my present company and then hold that for a doubt. That'd be hard for me to handle and be hard for me to sell my wife.
I understand.
My advice at this point would be the question, the question posed, and if you don't mind my asking, Mr. Griffin, regardless of whether Medicare, third-party independent, American Healthcare Act, if the council, the council's made clear at this point, at this present, that it is not inclined to contribute to your spouse's health insurance. With that in mind, are you still interested in entering into this agreement with that, knowing that term, regardless of whether or not you can find a supplement? And I don't mean to put you on the spot, but being how we have to do our business in the open, at this stage, we're sort of at a critical cross point where the parties are having to evaluate where their respective headlines are, to speak veritably. And I just want to make, I know you and I've had some preliminary conversations in that regard.
Yes, and the discussions we've had, you know, that I asked for a package similar to the package I have now.
Correct.
Which I pay 4,200. And then I also mentioned to you the possibility that in light of the fact that I did get a car allowance with this position, that I'd be willing to allocate the value of that towards what I would pay. And that would push the amount to close to 8,000 dollars.
And towards half enough.
And so that, that is my, I'm negotiating against myself, that's my request. But it sounds like that even with that backing up twice, that that's not going to be good enough.
I would, I wouldn't say that you're negotiating against yourself. You've offered, you've made the offer of those things.
And I made a second offer.
Understood, understood. You gave two alternatives. The council did.
On top of the other.
Understood, sir. The council has considered both, but is not inclined to entertain them. And so knowing that at this point, it really comes down to how critical that element is for you. And we can continue this conversation. I just want to make sure that we are all speaking from a place of shared information. At this point, the council, I communicated both those positions. They've considered both of them explicitly in this open meeting. Unfortunately, from the parties' positions, we weren't able to reach a middle point on that, at least at this stage. And so the question is, do you have anything you wish to, not, I'm not even asking for an additional counteroffer. I'm just asking, is that a red line? Is it the absence of, does the absence of spousal insurance coverage or quantum towards spousal insurance coverage mean that's a deal breaker for you?
It's a serious matter. I'm going to have to talk about it with my wife tonight.
And that's, and that's a perfectly respectable answer. I just, I'm trying to make sure my client, the council, understands where your position is at this stage.
It's fair enough. Do you have any other questions at this point?
Just one. I think your wife is allowed to say, because if in fact you were to move on from your current employer, she's covered by that insurance. She by law, I believe, has the opportunity to say, I want to continue that coverage with your current employer. And so they, they can say, this is how much that would be. Because they can't throw her out on the street.
That's right. But that would be, that would be the Cobra Act.
Right.
And that would be a very large number, go back to the 16,000 dollar number.
Plus 5 percent.
It's what, 5 percent?
It's 5 percent.
And ultimately, while we can suggest opportunities or options for Mr. Griffin to investigate, we can't provide him advice ultimately. You know, he's not obviously positioned to rely on it. None of us are his insurance agent or his fiduciary in that regard. So we can certainly give him options to explore, but ultimately, that's for he and his wife to determine, not for, you know, the council to provide him and he to rely on those statements. Okay.
But I appreciate that. But unfortunately, Cobra, I understand Cobra's very expensive. Be something like a 16,000, very good. To continue Cobra on that basis.
Time limit too.
Yeah.
I think there's a time limitation.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin.
Thank you very much.
At this, at this time, is the council in agreement? We give him a little time to go speak with his wife and get back with, see him turn his attorney, birthday boy, or whatever. And then, maybe you can email us.
Absolutely. I will keep you updated on that. And if we, if we have a proposal to bring back for you, whether that's a changed agreement or the agreement is current form, just without that term, I will make that clear to you as I have in each draft highlighting what's different. I'd very much appreciate it.
And I appreciate all your hard work on this matter.
I think, I think since contracts, since this is an open discussion in this contract, I mean, things that were pointed out here, we should review section five at automobile and change at the pickup truck.
Good for you.
I'm not, I'm not so sure that I'm in favor of making any changes to the terms we all agreed on to this point. It's just the new thing that we're presenting that we should be talking about. I think, you know, in all fairness to everyone, I think if we start rehashing this contract, that just changes the whole perspective.
It does, but I mean, once you start opening up the contract like it wants, I mean, spousal benefit, I think we need to explore what has been revealed to us tonight, that this car allowance may not really be needed.
Well, I think he's, I think it was part of the package that we all agreed on. And he was negotiating, not necessarily saying it wasn't needed, but saying he's willing to trade one for the other. So I just want to be careful not to take advantage of that.
Let's not have a back and forth. Both of you have spoken your feelings on this and toward the concern of time, because we have a lot ahead of us for tonight.
Did we need a motion to adjourn this meeting?
I'm about to ask for that. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Frank Baker, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Let's take five minutes and then we'll come right back.